It equates to the time factor that you're being delayed to payments. Does anybody run those numbers?
We haven't quite done that, but most of our payments can get them the same fiscal year. It's just, you know, what's aggravating is when we got, well, we shut down in April, we didn't get any government.
Right. So that's six months delay and obviously to make up while you're waiting, you have to pull out of your emergency file.
Yeah. That's one way. We also borrowed from different funds.
I guess.
We also say, we have so much money, let's say for deferred maintenance, we're just having to do that, we're going to give some of that money. Things like that. So in our fund transfers that that was held, we had these budget meetings sometimes, you know, to relay and try and discuss all these things. And we have a very good CFO now, who used to work for Lego, Dr. Steve DeBracha, and he sits there and kind of presents different options to us and educates us about making decisions the best we can. But I haven't seen any, you know, gross neglect or any misappropriation of funds or anything even, you know, coming close to it. Any wastefulness. We've done even small things or like taking a waste management plan from like 21,000 years to 60,000, little things like that. We've cut all the fat. There's no fat on the bone left to cut. We usually have to have more money coming in.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other committee reports that anybody wants to make this time, please do administrative portion of this meeting. Do we want to talk about if we need to meet here at 6 o'clock? Should we move it to 6:30 here? I mean, do we see these winter months or the next months ahead, uh, need, we need that?
I think we could probably move it to 6:30.
Does anybody object to that? Basically, we've, you know, I would say need the general meeting the same time for that set, so everybody knows.
Well, next month is more celebratory, right? Yeah, next month.
So really, we won't have much unless we want to do all of our eating stuff in the administrative portion.
I've been wanting to combine the means because.
Private, private. 6:30? Anything want to say?
Yeah.
Let's ask for discussion. Do you think there's any problem you want to add?
In most cases, there are, we've got to go back, right? We've got a bunch of issues that come up and we need to prepare ourselves for.
Right, because like even tonight, what we heard from you.
That was like 10:15 minutes.
Yeah.
So sure that a.
Yeah. The next turn could go, I was kind of going along on purpose. I was likely to go along on purpose. But I appreciate it. I'm glad that that was a pretty detailed report. So.
So change.
No, I have to go first.
So are we moving to change the start time?
Yeah. Blue in for his ministry.
How it from.
Yeah, we'll give it a shot. Okay, I always say, aye, aye, aye.
Maybe for this sunshine, the whole thing, maybe put something on the website or something, or maybe.
Well, I don't know.
Hope everybody spent a nice, safe, happy Halloween.
Sorry you out there working on both eight games a couple times.
I do, yeah. And I hope we didn't pull my nose on the candies. Uh, just a few things to go over. Unfortunately, I won't have any citation statistics this time around. Our headquarters division usually compiles all those statistics for us and since we don't have them next door, since our headquarters is up north there, and I can't go into the office adjacent, then crack the whip and tell them to produce those stats for me, so I don't have that. But know that we're still working out there, right? We're putting tickets out there. I do have collision statistics for last month. Actually, it was a fairly late month. Total reported traffic collisions in the Aguadoosa adjacent areas were 23, which only three of those were DUI related and only two of the DUI related were injury causing traffic collisions. Total injury traffic collisions of the 23 were 11. In terms of arrests, we had two warrant arrests, eight total DUI arrests. We had other misdemeanors. One of them was rather interesting. It was a indecent exposure. Somebody commuted in the animal valley bus and unfortunately, a male exposed himself in the presence of a female. And so we made the stop on the bus and took care of this as there he was. We did file charges against him for misdemeanor indecent exposure. There was one felony arrest and it was DUI related and was one of the traffic collisions for last month. At that collision, there were four minor injuries. Last time, now that I remember, I was asked about the collision that actually occurred here on Aguadoosa, right, in front of the airport entrance. Didn't have any details as to what happened there last month. What it was, was a vehicle traveling eastbound on Aguadoosa. The driver of that vehicle, non-DUI related, somehow lost control. Their story is he made a missed a shift or something like that, but in any case, lost control, was driving a little too fast, hit a pedestrian who was out there walking a dog, I think. And pedestrian suffered fairly severe injuries, a broken hip, I believe, and some other less than the broken hip. But then the vehicle subsequently hit the front of the kiosk there of the airport and pulled over onto its roof. Driver was fine, not charged with anything per se criminal. Of course, it's a driving record will settle the consequences. So that's all I have in terms of traffic collisions again, no citation statistics. What I do know at the department is that we're now entering the phase where we renew our federal grants. We get money for enforcement purposes and we have two major grants that hopefully will be gaining quite a few hours here, one of them is for speed related. And we started that, as a matter of fact, just last weekend. We're out and about writing a lot of tickets, so the more of that money that we get, the more officers additional support we get to go out and write mostly speed related, but we're also looking for DUI and other unsafe driving actions. That's that specific one. We are also getting looks like some hours for enforcing motorcycle safety. Motorcycles can be an issue. Sierra Highway, maybe not so much. Generally speaking, motorcycle riders like a lot of curvy roads, they'll do Soladec Canyon, okay, San Francisco, so we'll get some of those hours distributed so we can get more enforcement out there. I'm sure we'll end up venturing onto Sierra Highway and Aguadoosa using some of those hours nonetheless, so you should see a little more patrol for safe driving actions. And on one last note, I just wanted to mention, I have a assumed responsibility at our office now for the program that the California Highway Patrol has, it's called the Cheaters Program. It's a California resident foreign registration, meaning people who reside in California or working here, living here, and have registration from out of state sources and continue to operate their vehicles here. So I encourage you all to go ahead and notify the Highway Patrol if you happen to see a condition like that. The easiest way to get ahold of us is through our website, www.chb.ca.gov. And on there, you'll see the section there that says Cheaters Program. And all you do is input all the information that goes in rather anonymously. They don't ask you for return contact information. You just put down the plate that you saw, the state, the vehicle type, color, the location, the time, and a brief description as to why you think the person actually resides here. Could be a long-term resident or anything like that. So I will get that information, it will come down through our headquarters section. We'll issue a letter to the person, give you the firm warning that says, hey, you need to respond to us or go to the DMV and register your vehicles. And if nothing happens, the subsequent action will be a citation to their home and they'll have to take it up to the court, so.
All right. And by the way, if any of you intended the Antonovich ride, I know Rosalind was not there.
That's correct.
It was.
Dormals.
Nope. I didn't see him. So much others. But just want to say that, yes, it was me on a horse, riding. And you're spelling it. And I'm walking better now, but. I took my new cop horse, which I've only had for like two months, and been working with him, so it was a long ride for both of us. And he got to the end, it was like, okay, I'm not moving. I'm done. But it was fun. Ride was good, food was good. So yeah, good. And, uh, in fact, the station captain of Palmdale, he was there, and the station captain for Park's Bureau was there, so it was good. All right, last month, we had a total of four instances that resulted in reports. One burglary, one suspected child abuse, and two non-criminals. One was lost property, the other was a surrendering of firearms, which we do take. So if you, people have relatives that died, they don't want firearms, you can call us. We will collect and we give you a receipt and then they get turned over for the big cruncher in the sky. So if you have a decent firearm, just probably better take it to a gun store on consignment if you want it to remain. I've seen some nice antiques go through, like World War II carbines and things like that, that are collectors, that just get crushed because grandpa brought it home or dad brought it home, and now we don't want it. We do take them. We take the ammo too, and all that gets disposed of accordingly, so. The, and I'll explain, the suspected child abuse doesn't always mean there's a child abuse case. We get a lot of these. In fact, we get more of them now, working with Department of Children and Family Services because of some recent events. They'll type in a call, we get it, we go out, and maybe nothing. Could be the neighbor said, hey, I saw them, we've had, I saw them yell at the kids, so they must be suffering mental abuse. So we have to go out, examine, and interview, and do what we do. If we don't find anything, we still pull a report number, say, yeah, we went out there, we found nothing, case closed. If we find something which out here is, I want to say, but is very little at all, then we take accounts with that, so. So that's, becomes a report with stat, so we track those. We have been having problems, and that's tied to the burglary. I think we've come up with about 15 last four months of storage containers being broken into. In fact, a gentleman saw me today and I said, yeah, please call it in so we can take a report. I haven't seen it yet. But he didn't know if he should report the theft of his weed eaters and generators and, yes, you should. You know, I know this is remote, but we've got, it's the same individual who's going into these containers and they're either cutting the bottom halves off so you can't see it. They cut the top and bottom, so they open the doors, take out what they want, close the doors. You look at it and go, oh, the box is still on, it must be okay. And then you go out to open it, realizing there's nothing holding it. Or they cut it to the side, which takes a lot, but we have like sheds, some of the steel, so they cut it like a book and open it up, walk in and take your stuff, and then they fold it back over. And like I said, we believe it's the same person based on evidence that I can't go into right now, but it's becoming a problem. And they're taking power tools, generators, ladders, things that can be easily sold off, and it's expensive to replace.
Is it inside jobs or are these just random?
At this point, I can't, I don't want to give too much away and I don't want them to go, ooh, they're onto me. So let's just say we have an idea and we're pursuing it. Hopefully, next meeting, I'll have an answer and I can tell you we got the guys. But the problem is, is a lot of your insurance companies, they won't pay without a police report. So, you know, and I hear this, and I'm not complaining, I hear this, hey, my neighborhood has all sorts of thefts. And I go to the stat machine and pull up the stats and say, well, there's no calls for service. No one's ever called the insurance department. So as far as we're concerned, there was never a problem. Hate to say that.
Thank you. Most fires are not recent fires and most of them are started, like Scott said, with a spark of some kind, something from a truck, a tire overheating, someone throwing a cigarette out the window. I don't, those fires don't get my attention, you know, I mean, I know when they're big and when I need to be concerned, but if you ever are curious and want to know how something started, I can easily get that information for you, I just don't track that. Because actually, we have many, many starts every day, you just don't hear about them. You hear about maybe the ones in your area that are close to your home, of course, but that we just gave them all the time. And remember, it's not just a couple helicopters. It's, you get in any first alarm, fresh assignment, which is just any fire, you get three helicopters, and now you get the two super scoopers and a sky crane with every assignment. I mean, you often don't see those because they get canceled. I mean, our engines will get canceled, most times do, en route, so we get, you know, and you're right, that we have the fires start in all the same areas year after year. I don't know if you remember, three or four years ago, four or five years ago, they were constant, somebody throwing fuses out the window right along your way here, just constant. And thank God we haven't had that. That person must have moved to Arizona or something, getting free taxes.
No weeds this year because there was no rain.
It's part of the.
So we have that, Eric, just to jump to that, just a reminder, we have that contract there, thanks to the board and to the fire district, the super scoopers and the sky cranes, well over $5 million. Every time those pilots get in their aircraft, they get paid. That's over and beyond the contract amount. And then there's other associated fees, so it's quite expensive and it's either or 90-day, 120-day contracts. They sometimes get extended depending on fire weather. Last year, I don't know if you remember, they got extended because we were expecting so much more heavy Santa Anas into the new year. So usually, we go to the end of December and it's many, many millions of dollars, which brings me to, just to, I don't have much for it tonight, just a couple of quick updates. We've got our projected budget for the fire district for 2013 and '14, and we're at a deficit of about $37 million, which is better than it has been in the past. Remember, we're a $1 billion fire district, $1 billion fire district. So the city of Santa Clarita has a 220-something million dollar budget, you know, four times that amount. And so for a $37 million deficit, it's not as bad as it could be. We're starting to recoup some income from property taxes recovering, property values recovering, and the redevelopment agency fees coming back to us, so putting outside of the coin, you're looking out there, it can be a bigger or challenging thing. But that, we do have about a $400 million critical infrastructure deficit, so we're still a work in progress and really kudos to our executive team and to the board for managing to keep us in full force, no effects at all to our organization throughout the past several years. At the end of October, we had our semi-annual youth foot sale that friends put on, and it's very successful. They also added a new component, a community parking lot sale, a junk and the trunk sale on Sunday morning, and that did really well for the friends and there was a lot of community members out, neighbors out visiting. I don't know how well it went for the actual vendors, but there were certainly a lot of people there like having a good time that morning, so we'll probably add that to future sales. Programming for the next couple, well, the next six weeks or so is pretty quiet. A lot of the programs are on holiday hiatus, Sweetwater Bed Clinic Series. My understanding is one of their beds has left their practice and so they're a little shorthanded, so they'll be resuming in the mid-year. And then our celestial explorations event for this month will postpone till December 11th because it's the end of the season star party and they're viewing comet ice on. And so our astronomers determined that Wednesday, December 11th is the optimum viewing night for this area, so that's moved to December 11th. And we have a promo going right now that I attached the flyer for. Every year, it's Disney on Ice, they do a live life promotion where kids, they read four books, they fill out their form and bring it in for a drawing for a family, four pack of tickets to one of the Disney on Ice shows. And then that goes till the end of the month. And each library gets the same amount of ticket packages, so for a library like ours that isn't very busy, just about every kid that enters is probably going to win, so yeah. And then the service that I'm talking about tonight is something we've had for a while, but it's just kind of a reminder. It's our live for want help, tutor.com. Schools, libraries, private, you know, parents across the nation contract with this service. The county subscribes to it, so our users can access it for free, either in the library or from home. You just need to have an internet connection in the library room. And it's every day from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It's for all age levels, all the way up to college, and not just academic subjects, there's also a career component. So you just log into the site and you answer a couple of questions. For example, last night, we were doing a geometry one, so they have like dropdown menus. It's college level, I have a question, I need the formula, and then you type it in and then they connect you with a live person. And it's not just, you know, some random dude in his garage, it's, you know, an actual teacher or a high law student. And you use a chat interface and there's a whiteboard, virtual whiteboard, and they actually drew the equation out and gave the examples, and you talk back and forth. And then today, I helped a much, that was a college question last night, this morning. This afternoon, I did one for a fifth grader with fractions. And then just a test before I came here, I made up a question for like high school social studies for like American history. I asked about the difference between the first and second grade awakenings and how they influenced, you know, American culture. And kind of arrived on it, so it's great, absolutely great. So that's what the bracelets for and the bookmark and the flyer. And then as far as what else is going on, next week, I'm doing library presentations to the Vasquez High PTSO on the 18th and the Aguadoosa School on the 19th. They're having their monthly PTSO meetings at the library, so I can do a presentation on services and resources for the parents. Because I did go to the teachers and administrators prior to the beginning of the school year to talk to them, you know, I'm doing the parents. Next month, I'm doing Metal Arc and High Desert, the first week of December. And then in January, I'm hoping to get into at least the high school classrooms and maybe the middle school as well. Oh, and I had the Acton Lions Club at the library, they had their monthly meeting and did a presentation for them too. Our Friends in the Library bookstore in the library had a grant reopening. It's been expanded and reorganized and restaffed, so there's all brand new stuff in there, it looks really nice, and the doors can be opened all the time now, so there's not a volunteer in there running it. There's an honesty box on the wall, so you can always, you know, shop the store whenever the library's open. And lastly, for me, I'm really excited, there is, LSTA is the Library Services and Technology Act, and they have a grant program. It's the Staff Innovation Fund, and the county selected 30 of its staff members, mostly community library managers such as myself or regional youth coordinators to participate in this six-month training program. And basically, the focus of it is identifying grant opportunities, writing successful grant applications, and making successful sales pitches like to power people, the people with money. So I'll be going through this training through the next six months, and at the end of that period, part of this grant, which comes from the state library, is a pot of grant money for the 30 participants in this. So at the end of this training, we will, you know, put our new skills to use and actually write a grant application and compete for a chunk of this grant money. So it's entirely possible within the next year, I'll have a grant for something back on the water.
First notices, October 2013 revised draft general plan is available at the county website, you know, the actual email address I've got here, and at the Los Angeles County libraries. The general plan will guide development in the unincorporated areas of Los Angeles County through the year 2035. There's also a notice of public hearing, proposed update to the housing element of the general plan, notice of public hearing by board supervisors. The proposed revision is a periodic update to the county's existing housing element to address the changing housing needs of the unincorporated areas of Los Angeles County. Documents are available for review, for review at planning.ott county.gov/housing. December 3rd, 2013, at 9:30 AM, room 381B of the hollow administration, written comments can be sent to zoning section, executive office, to the board supervisors, room 383.
I received the latest draft from regional planning and county council on Friday, and today, I responded to regional planning with seven items that need clarification. So we are closing in on it. And yeah, I just had to either get a good reason why this stuff was changed or get a picket.
Please that.
Okay. In our applicability, at the very beginning, we indicated that repair and reconstruction was not going to be applicable, and they changed, oh, a couple of words. And one of the issues that we wanted was that for repair and reconstruction, you could go outside of the original footprint where it was, as long as you're within the setback requirements.
And we had a very nice selection. We were open for 13 hours here, and about that. I have a slight change in the agenda, where you had 53 votes cast, it was actually 53 ballots were cast and 159 votes. Which was, for non-contestants, that was very good. And had a nice turnout, and we got four nice people liking for you.
Amazing how that happens.
And the other question, we did turn over, there's your box right there with all the good stuff in it. Nice bit.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Now we have ready for the film committee report by the.
No report.
No report. My news, get the report. Get through some of the stats there.
I do a real estate report. Current, I suppose I'd do a shorter version of what I did in the report. Currently, there's 33 parcels of land for sale in Aguadoosa, and there's 32 houses for sale. If you compare the, these numbers from, since the 2006, which was the height of the market, 2007 is when we had the bust, so at that time, we would have had 65 parcels for sale, 90 homes on the market. So in a healthy market, 90 is about the number of the home listings that we have. And the average price of a home currently in Aguadoosa is 618,000. Our average days on the market is now 60 days. That's up from 30 days about, we had a period about two to three months ago when houses were moving very quickly. So they're staying on the market a little bit longer. The smallest lot for sale right now is a small quarter acre lot for $8,000, all the way up to 155 acres by Boylan, Montel CRI way there for $2.5 million. And the lowest house for sale is 149,000, the highest house is 2.2 million. And again, the average price of a home house, 618,000 compared to about 500,000 about 18 months ago, so we've had over 20% increase in the average price. And the one problem that we're having on the land side is that it's nearly impossible to get any land loans right now. And so unless the seller was willing to carry you, you don't have a situation like back in 2001, 2005, where you could get a land loan and turn that into a construction loan and build your home now. So the average price, the average price of a land, which the average land I would consider maybe a five acre property, four or five acre property, that has a well on it, that's been certified, that land would have been about 375,000 perhaps, 360,000. that land would have been about 375,000 perhaps, 360,000 back in 2006. That land is about 200,000, so the average lot. If you have a good plant that produces three gallons of, and it's been certified, the best you could hope to get right down is about 200,000. And the person would have to either have cash, or you'd have to carry the note yourself. Problem with that is that it's very hard to turn those into construction loans unless you have a sizable amount down. So if I bought that land from you for a couple hundred thousand, I would have had to put about half of that down for a construction loan to absorb the amount. So any question?
The Vasquez Rocks Community Day, October 13th, was a great success. The town council, along with a couple of town council members, received some certificates. But we're gonna hold off and give those next month at our December meeting. And as Deputy Short talked about, the Antonovich Trail is to ride, that was another success. And I really encourage you to come out and attend the Daryl Whitman Memorial Dedication that Rosalind spoke about. It's a really, really great memorial. And Daryl, Daryl was a member of the town council back years ago. And he was really the one who encouraged me to get on the council and to really understand the trail's importance. So it's a really, really nice, nice memorial. And if you're around, it'd be great for everybody to come over.
That's November 20th at 11:00.
11 o'clock over at Vasquez Rocks.
Water stewardship. We had a PAC meeting last month, discussed some issues, didn't make much headway. We do have their guarantee.
We're reconsidering currently various options regarding to the high school construction. And as I've done in the past, I'll try and give a quick history of what's happened with our high school construction. Basically, the community, about seven years ago, passed the bond for 13 million. And that bond places a $30 for each $100,000 of assessment on our homes. That provides a $13 million bond. That bond was passed with the hope that the state would do what it has historically done since 1941, which is pay a matching portion, and then there will be also some federal money, about a million dollars, leaving us with about $27 million to build a high school. We drew plans for such a high school, and we went through the whole process of not only getting approved by the building and safety, regional planning, all those things, but also by DSA, which is Department of School Architects. And that's a grueling process to go through and get plans approved for any school. So we went through all that. We had our school plans for a $27 million school approved by DSA. And when the state told us that, you know, forget you guys, we're gonna get out of school, this whole building business, we're not gonna be doing this, you're basically left out the drawing. We're broke. That's what the state gives the tools. And even if we were gonna pay you the matching portion, get in line. You have anywhere between a few to 400 people ahead of you. You never exactly get an exact number on that. So what we were faced with is with saying that we have this beautiful school for 27 million, but it looks like we're gonna have to build it with 13 million. So we took the school and reduced it to about six or seven different plans of what 13 million was supposedly built. And we introduced those plans to the community back about two years ago, two and a half years ago in April of 2011. And the community chose Plan E. Plan E was a version of the school, had a watered-down version of the school, no gym, smaller amounts of the classroom buildings. We didn't change the plans or anything. We just said, we're not gonna build that block of classrooms. We're gonna build only these, we're gonna build administrative buildings. We're not gonna have the tennis courts, the baseball field, and all these other things that we're gonna have. We're gonna change our entrance, we're gonna reduce the plans. Our architects, in the process of doing the cost estimation for the plan that the community agreed upon, made a mistake. So they basically said, you can build this thing for 13 million, when in fact it could only, it was more of a 16 to 19 million dollar school that they presented to the community. Of course, everybody loved it, right? So we had to go back to the drawing board at that point. That's at a point where we realized that 2014 opening that I kept promising Mary, you know, and is a menace, that we're not gonna be able to meet that. And we went back to the drawing board, and we started considering other options for that same Plan E that the community had approved. And that was the superintendent and I went and visited places like in Bakersfield, Riverside, and looking at buildings from colleges to airports to schools that had been built from custom prefab. And they did, they look great. So it looked like, well, we're going to have, we're going to be able to build our Plan E for 13 million out of custom prefab. Well, that company, JTS Construction, that had given us a 12.9 million bid, turned around and sent us a 20-page, you know, letter explaining why they couldn't do that. And that translated into basically, that the main problem was that our site prep was too expensive to prepare that site for any type of construction. And that was up to $5 million just before we even built anything in the grading and the preparation of the site. So being faced with that, and knowing that we were kind of stuck with the architectural firm that we weren't very happy with, and we thought they didn't have the expertise to really help us out in the way that we wished they could, because we didn't end up with the best architectural firm. We couldn't afford that. We kind of went to some firms, our superintendent had an idea that we should go and ask for some charitable help from firms, that they could tell us where we can focus our efforts. And they told us to change, do what you can to change the prep, the site prep. So we have cut the site prep down now by doing various things that will be too extensive to go into right here, to down to maybe a million and a half to two. That now allows us to go back to the custom prefab option of Plan E, which the community chose. So we're building this school the way the community wants, out of Plans A to H. They picked Plan E, and we're gonna do it in the custom prefab. The superintendent has their report tomorrow night. It's gonna be presented to the board to see what direction the board wants to take on that. If everything goes well with that, and we can cut our site prep down to a couple million, we can build and we can have JTS just submit us another bid, and their bid was 11.7 million. That's exactly what we have actually. If we can do that, the superintendent is telling us at this point that for the 2015, 2016 school year, which will be one year later than what we anticipated with the other school. So at the next meeting, I'm gonna give a report about how things went tomorrow night and whether the board accepted, chose to go with the JTS bid and how all that's going. We've cut everything that we could in this budget. And we're still in a situation where, number one, about 90% of our budget goes to salary. In a healthy environment, it should be about 65%. And number two, we had a $3 million reserve mainly composed of building fees, which is a developer fees, which anyone who builds a new home has to pay to the local school district. And we had gone through that, we only had about 300,000 left on that. So we're getting, we're looking at things like salary reduction as a final resort. And we're trying to avoid that. So things like this charter and possible future charters, which we would approve, the petition of other charters that would basically just bring us money. It wouldn't be out of district. We're looking at other ways to come up with some money. Because we're having a very difficult time at the school just paying the bills. So that's where we're at. The charter will remain for the rest of the year locally here. And then next year, we will have the Einstein Charter School at Aguado Se. Make sure that's a program offered to parents if they choose to have that. And that's down to a lottery system for the parents that will be.
Thank you. Acton House Council, anybody have anything on the Acton House Council report? Last committee is the Honda House Report. I understand someone very close to the Honda House. Or have a report. Is it ready for public release?
It is, it was scary.
It was scary?
We'll get out of the cars.
I think, or, first off, I would like to give a big round of applause to Mary. Anybody I talked to, they loved it. It was fantastic.
We had a lot of, each night was kind of different because we had probably 15 kids and adults as actors throughout the Honda House. So it was, it changed every night. It changed how they wore their clothes. It was fun.
Did the rewarding them, was it the best act? Did that work?
We didn't. We didn't do that. We, next year we may have a vote for your scariest scary actor.
Oh, there you go, and a trophy. Not everybody gets a trophy.
But in order to do it, you've gotta go through it.
Oh, no big trouble. Thank you.
It was scary.
High speed rail up there. Anybody have any, see anybody here from High Speed Rail? Right now we're in the open forum section. I think we have some people here that wanna express something about open forums.
You people, how many horses or hoofed animals are legal allowed per acre in Aguado Se?
It's eight?
A bird, a goat.
Hoofed animals per acre.
It could be goats.
Yeah, yeah, just alright.
So it's a total A act. That would get fixed.
And you can actually go online.
Yeah, and search, I am low.
Oh, really? It doesn't need somebody?
It depends on whether you're A1 or A2.
How's that included in that acreage?
Yeah, but the horses cannot be in that.
Who's gonna tell?
So if you had two acres and the house took up, say, 5,000 square feet and surrounding area, and you're left with an acre and a half of usable ground, are we still talking two acres?
Parcel size. It's legal, it's the gross acreage of that particular parcel as seen by the county. And if you go on the website, they have a new thing where you can zoom in. And they have pictures from 2012, overhead shots. And as you go deeper and deeper into a particular parcel, it'll spit out what the site, you can click on the tax assessors link, and it'll show off the level, it'll show exactly what acres there are. And it also says what the zoning is. And then you can go to the zoning page, and it gives you detail as to what's allowed on that property under that zoning and what isn't allowed. Our next regular Aguado Se cap council meeting is December 11th. There will be a no-business meeting, holiday celebration along with recognition and appreciation of council members and community members.
Where will that be?
I think it's gonna be here.
The December meeting?
We tried.
Yeah, nothing ever came together, so.
It's gonna be here unless you're told different.
Okay.
We have, we have a big now.
Sign up.
And it was great, except you couldn't hear a word of the person next to you. It was sick. The cookies were horrible.
That was the perfect meeting.
Great pizza. You couldn't hear a word of it. It was on the table.
It was a party.
I don't know what it is.
Exactly, so it's Christmas.
Sierra Highway, finished business. Sierra Highway AT&amp;T cell tower, I thought that was finished.
I don't think that it has actually been finalized.
Okay, so we're gonna keep it right there.
Yeah.
Where exactly is that located? I saw the address number, but...
Boylan Point, right ahead and off toward Acton, left-hand side. Not up against the hill, but kind of out of the flat area toward that blue lawn.
And will it be rather like a pine or hopefully?
Yeah, it's gonna be something like that, but it's gonna be 60 foot tall. So that was the big concern, but it's 60 foot so that they can put different carriers in different loads.
Where would that turn? On Sierra Highway? Or on Boylan? I don't know where Boylan is. Probably on Sierra Highway.
And believe it or not, this is just the company. Do you know there's a cell tower going down? I had a person from one of the cell companies call me wanting to know if they owned the property that had the cell equipment on it. And I said, no, there's nothing there. And she was, oh yeah, it's going down Sierra Highway, which Steve's house. On the right-hand side, there's a pole there that has like two white boxes on the table. That's actually...
The boxes are canisters.
Yeah, that's...
They look like they're white and they're, you know, four foot tall. She says that's a cell site. It's an actual cell something.
There's a couple more of them. AT&amp;T's got a couple repeaters, one's right up here. But Verizon also, there's a fiber optic that they just ran all the way down through here. And that's why everybody's getting 4G now.
I got you. Umbria Estates.
DSL is nothing.
The general right now, that'll be January 8th.
No, you first.
And where are you?
January 8th. So January 8th, we will be, as of right now, discussing Umbria Estates by Michael Lapkus. And February is slated for environmental health, hall of water. So we'll see the terms of that. So if there's nothing else urgent, I have a motion for a meeting. Paper, say hi.
Bye.
Close.